Good evening, everybody. It's 7 o'clock, so we're going to get started. We've got two hearings scheduled for tonight, but before we get into that, we have the public comment section of the evening. So is there anybody here who wants to discuss anything other than the two items that are up for review tonight? If you do, just put your hand up. If not, we'll get started. So, yeah, let's do -- we've got a new member tonight, Dan Felton. Welcome.
Thank you.
Why don't we go around the table and introduce Dan to everybody?
Hi.
Hi. We've met.
Mark Solomon.
Frandy Johnson.
And Devin Bruce. Hi. And Dan, I missed your last name.
Felton.
And we're missing three tonight, so one we're expecting, one we're not sure of. Hopefully, be posted on that, but welcome. This will be a good night to ease into. This won't be a 1:00 AM, we don't think, a 1:00 AM hearing, so. But we'll see. You never know. So, first hearing we have is scheduled for 7:00 o'clock. It's a site plan review for AT&amp;T Wireless for new antennas on an existing tower at 790 Florence Road, Florence map ID 37-077. We've got a quick presentation.
Hello. My name is Brian Allen with KJK Wireless. I represent the applicant New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known as AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is looking to continually improve coverage in Northampton. In order to do so, we are looking to place antennas on an existing tower that's owned by Comcast at 790 Florence Road. Essentially, our proposal is to put antennas near the top of the tower, set down so that the tops of the antennas match with the top of the tower, so we're not increasing the height of the tower. At the base of the tower, there's currently a fenced-in compound and parking area that Comcast uses for their own uses. We're looking to expand that in order to place our equipment in a separate fenced area with a little bit of additional parking. Actually, it's more like turnaround space and parking or access space to building that fenced area. I provided plans which you received, and I sent over photo simulations, which I believe were distributed, which show four and simulated those very well depict what it's going to see, and they do a good job of finding out which locations to take the photo. And I'm going to answer any questions in terms of numbers or the reason why we need a tower, but those of you who have AT&amp;T will realize that we don't have very good coverage in that area. We're currently working on another site, which is in the construction phase, approved at Smith College in the Helen Hills Chapel, and that'll provide coverage in this area, and this will cover a different section of town. So combined, those will provide very good coverage in the area.
Are you renting space on the tower?
Yes. Basically, it's a commercial lease. The tower's owned by Comcast or one of their underlying entities, and it's managed by a company called CTI Tower. We have negotiated a lease for space on the tower and space down at the bottom floor of our equipment shelter.
So this just is increasing the distance of coverage?
It's going to be completely new coverage in that area. So, we have a couple towers in town. I could go over which ones those are. Probably familiar with Glendale Road, that's the dump, I believe. Is that correct? King Street in the parking lot of the mall, Atwood Drive, and then the chapel. And then we have a couple in the surrounding areas which provide coverage into town, but this is going to -- this is a nice site. It complements what we have and provides a good robust coverage in that area.
This is the tower that you can see if you're coming up from East Hampton on Florence Road, the orange, painted orange and white?
Yes.
Okay, it's on top of some hill or other?
It's on top of the hill above a couple of those cohousing areas.
Yep.
And you can kind of see it from the golf course as well. The easiest spot is when you're coming up over that crest, you can see it in the distance kind of to the right of Florence Road.
Are there any other existing cell antennas on there now?
There are no cell antennas on there. The current providers, which would be AT&amp;-- our competitors, a lot of them are on the site at the golf course, which is a little to the south. That tower has a lot of stuff on it, so we would be lower on that site. This one is preferable for us. It provides better coverage in that area.
I know in some towns you've gotten, gone through this process and then not activated the tower. Are you sure you're going to do that one to this tower?
Unfortunately, I don't have the money. You know, I'm not the money guy, so we're -- I'm tasked with finding a good location. We've already leased it. I think we're already paying rent, so it's just a matter of time before they turn the sites on. I know Smith College, we worked on that because that was an important site for us and is, I believe, currently in construction. So, you know, this area, I've done a number of these sites. We have a site in Southampton, which we have permitted on College Highway, right on the border with East Hampton, I believe. And that one, once again, is kind of in process. It takes a little while, and then once they get them up, they have to integrate them into the network so that the coverage actually works. So, AT&amp;T has been actively building out this area, and I've been the person kind of driving around and finding these sites. So I, if I were to guess, I would say AT&amp;T would get their permits and build this in the spring, but, you know, that's as much as I know on my end as a, you know, kind of guy out on the street.
Question, the equipment shelter?
Yes.
With the generator inside, is that, is that an acoustic, does it have any acoustic properties, the shelter, or does the generator cycle every week?
Yeah. We had talked to CTI, who manages the site, and the Comcast engineers, and we had mentioned that, you know, we would have a generator there for emergency use that cycles, you know, once a week for half an hour or something to make sure it works. They have a generator on site, and they said, hey, you know, it may not be good to have two generators there if we don't have two, but we won't share ours with you. Is there any way you can make it sound less? So we said, well, we can use this one shelter. It puts it essentially in a concrete bunker, so the generator is inside the building, which allows for the noise reduction and allows for fuel containment because it's a diesel generator. So the fuel pan is inside the generator, inside the building. So if there's any leaks, it's still inside a concrete bunker, so, you know, there's huge catchment levels. And, you know, having done many sites here in Northampton, I figured I would just start with that because it would be a request that you would make anyway. So it's a nice one in terms of, you know, it's a six, eight-inch-thick concrete building with everything else inside. So all you have is the exhaust and the air intake.
Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public. If one in the public wants to speak to this? No?
If you didn't have any concerns.
It seems pretty straightforward. I mean, the tower's already there. If the tower wasn't there, it'd be a different discussion.
No, I mean, it's an existing tower. I mean, typically for new towers, you want to get a performance guarantee that the, if they stop using it, that they'll take the equipment down, but since they don't own the tower and, you know, the lease arrangements, I'm sure, address that, I don't think it's really necessary to have a separate bond or anything for that.
All right.
Do I move to close the public hearing?
Second hand, all in favor? Any discussion? Like I say, the tower's there, so.
Well, and I would have been interested if somebody had come to complain about it. I drove by today, there's not, it's just--
You can barely see it.
Exactly.
Right.
I move we approve site plan for AT&amp;T Wireless, new antennas on existing towers at 790 Florence Road, Florence map ID 37-077.
I'll give that one to Frandy. All in favor? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have to kill sort of a meeting.
We've got some minutes to look.
I wonder if he knows about solar block. There's a new product on the market. You can build concrete buildings that are solar collectors.
Oh, really?
It's called solar block, solar block.
You mean, they store heat or they store electricity?
Electricity.
Solar doesn't--
Generator.
Yeah, exactly. It's a great idea for that little concrete building.
It's like more of a bomb shelter than--
Got from UMAPs, got the patent.
It's concrete walls, concrete--
Trees all around up there.
We have six minutes to kill, so do, we've got two sets of minutes to look at. Last two months. First up is October 24th.
I move we approve the minutes of October 24th.
Second hand, all in favor? There's one. Second are the minutes from November 14th.
I move we approve the minutes of September 14th for consistency.
Second.
Okay.
That didn't kill six minutes.
That's a third second.
Well, they're such good minutes.
Kelly, what do you have for us?
Well, this might take longer than--
Than five?
Than five minutes. But there was one other thing I added to the agenda, that I'd like to add to the agenda just to initiate the conversation, and so we probably need to take more time, but maybe I'll just, I'm just inserting it now so you guys know.
A teaser.
Right.
So, remember when the residential zoning passed, and there were a bunch of things still on the bucket list that had to be taken care of? I'm still working on, I've got some more feedback about issues to potentially address in the design for larger projects, but I'm not quite ready to, I haven't quite pulled everything together and looked at other ordinances around the country to give to you guys to evaluate and sort of think about. So, while that's sort of cooking along, we decided to internally take a crack at the URA issue. So I have a marked-up map of options that you guys might want to think about moving forward to in the spring, because I think some of them are kind of no-brainers, at least to start the conversation before going out to public, for public comment, but just sort of to get it, sort of moving in that direction, deciding which way you might want to lead in terms of public, where to take the public, or start the public comment on that, so we can look at that map. But I don't, I mean, I don't want to roll it and show it to you now, but it might foster a lot of different questions, so we might want to leave it to the end, but I just wanted to let you know about that. And the other thing that I added on to the agenda was another minor amendment that I want to put out there that was raised by the building commissioner, actually relative to, now the zoning allows multiple different types of structures on one parcel, which we didn't allow before. And so Louis noted that perhaps we want to add a site plan threshold anytime you're adding a new residential unit to an existing lot, because now, right now, single-family homes are not allowed, are allowed by right. And so if someone already has a two, a single, two, three family on a parcel, and they want to add an additional unit, that would be considered a single family if it's just one unit. So that wouldn't, in and of itself, trigger site plan. I don't know if this is going to be an issue, if you think that's important to do, or if it's really more beyond a 2,000-square-foot threshold, you want to see the construction, but it's just something to sort of think about. And then how that corresponds to our current requirement of zoning board of appeals special permit for any detached accessory apartment. So what's the difference between a detached accessory apartment and a self-contained single-family unit? I mean, right now, by definition, it's 900 square feet is a threshold, but that one already requires zoning board of appeals special permit, but now under this new ordinance, we don't require special permit. So it's kind of just cleaning up that language and deciding what makes sense.
Okay.
So, probably not again.
Did Louis bring that up because it's, has it, has he, has it come across his desk where there's a conflict or potential conflict?
It's come across, well, in conversations with people floating different ideas about how they might be able to add units to their property, we've been, he's decided that, you know, even if you already have an existing property or structure on a property, that anytime you're going to add one self-contained unit that's detached, that would be, that would qualify as a single family. And so under, even though it's on the same parcel, something else, as another structure, principal structure. So, he was concerned that someone might, I guess the biggest concern would be someone might stagger a project and do serial single-family units and never come through a site plan review.
Yeah.
So, you know, if your lot is big enough, you could come in with one, and then next year, come in with one.
Right.
And then you haven't looked at the big picture of how it all works together, what the egress is and the parking. So, I guess that was sort of a red flag in his mind that, well, do we need to set something that's clear about how we do those things? So, I think it deserves discussion. Then the other question is, is that something that's important enough to move forward right now or wait till we address this other package of large unit projects that are now currently under moratorium?
Okay.
Was he thinking about this theoretically or in relationship to things that actually are attempting to go on the ground?
Um, theoretically, but it was triggered by something that might be a real project, but then sort of taking that the next step. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about that after, we'll talk about that after this. We've got our second hearing scheduled for 7:15. It's a site plan from Peacoit Group Five for single, or for five single-family house lots on Danny Drive, Hampton map IDs 38A-135 and 31C-35. So we've got a presentation, I imagine?
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Lloyd, representing the Peacoit Groups. We had asked for permission to subdivide two lots adjacent to some homes that we are already building at Moser Way Village Hill. There are lots A-22 and A-27 into five lots on those two lots. Before we talk about that, however, it's my understanding that the board has some questions relative to density issues there from the original permitting, so I think it's probably best if we discuss that first. We have asked Beth Murphy of Mass Development to join us tonight, who was part of the original permitting process there, so I'd like to ask you the questions. We're prepared to answer those.
I think the biggest question is, is why is this a site plan review versus a special permit review if the initial special permit that was granted called for a higher density in this area, which would imply that you need a special permit because you're effectively changing what was proposed originally for these lots?
I might as well then address that issue right up front. The special permit references a conceptual master plan, and that's what it is. It's conceptual. It's not definitive. So-- I don't know how to address-- I can walk it around while you're talking. I've got a handout. Do some handouts.
Similar to what you used. That's this.
Yeah. It's conceptual. It's viewed from 10,000 feet. It does not, we haven't done the engineering on all the individual lots. It's an approximation of what could happen there. And you see, in the master plan, the North employees home exists. We've got the memorial park up here. We've got townhouses down here. This is this lot and this lot are the subject of tonight's hearing. And that's, you know, what's there, and it was just as a guide, not a definitive plan. What you see over here is where we're at now. You'll notice in this area here, where the Beechwood Homes have been built out, six Beechwood Homes, there were 16 townhouses proposed in that area. Again, this was done by our architect planner. This is the actual, when the developer comes in, as to what they can build. It takes into account drainage. It takes into account driveway access. Takes into account what the market is looking for, as it's supposed to. So, it's the difference between, you know, thinking about it broadly and providing a framework, as to actually getting out there, doing the engineering, doing the marketing, finding developers who do high-quality development that are compatible with what's already there. And here you see the difference between this and what's being proposed tonight. There are three single-family homes as opposed to what's shown on here is six townhouses, and there are two single-family homes as opposed to two singles or duplexes down here. And, so what I handed out to you-- Where did I get, where'd the extra page go? You can flip through the first two pages. So it's showing the two different master plans, the conceptual and the actual to date. And then the first thing you come to is the original Peacoit proposal to us, which wanted to do four single families instead of three on that lot. And we asked them to get rid of one lot because there's a pathway that needs to come through here, and the pathway exists right here, and we want to continue it pretty much in a straight line through. We don't want to crowd it. We don't want to push it over too close to the TCB building. We want it to have a natural flow and be the, the natural access that it was anticipated to be. And the next thing I show you is some sketches that we did in-house where Italo Visko, who some of you may know, tried to get the four lots back there by moving the pathway over onto the TCB property. But that's not, again, it's just, the pathway then goes at an angle at a very short distance, and we don't think that's a good design solution. I mean, frankly, Mass Development would rather sell four lots than three, but it doesn't do the overall plan any good. It doesn't really contribute to the aesthetic of the design. The next thing that Italo sketched out for you was a townhouses. And you'll see that you can really only fit four townhouses in this location, because, again, what the, the concept planner wasn't taking into account, that you need a garage for each townhouse. That's what the market demands. So, Italo put the garage there and created the parking, and, one car garage, one parking space, and you could fit a four-unit townhouse there. And you can also see another version of that, where he's pulled the path back on, but it's a townhouse development. And then the last is simply his sketch of what Peacoit authorities submitted. So the overall point that I want to make is that this plan never has been literal. It has always been conceptual, and it has always allowed us to rearrange things to take into account the realities on the ground, the soil content, the developers who are available and willing and capable of working on the site. And so, and frankly, that has been, that kind of flexibility has been the strength of the master plan. And nowhere in the special permit does it treat the concept master plan as definitive, saying you must put six of this type of houses in this location. And in fact, when these plans were presented to the CAC, there were numerous alternative plans that moved housing types around, and it was always understood that this was not, you know, set in stone, that if there was more demand for housing, we prefer higher density. If it can be done, if it can be supported by the soil types, the access, the drainage, we certainly support higher density. But we also support realism about what can actually be built. And so, I don't know if you have, if that answers your question or if there's further questions?
I think for me, I follow where you're coming from, but the master plan was always a concept. It was always a guide. It wasn't definitive. I get that. But that's all that the planning board had at the time to approve. And so, at its core, the concept was high density in the middle and family, single-family on the perimeter. And what's happened over the years, it's been difficult when individual projects come in front of us that, on their own merits, are fine, but taken as a whole, they erode what the master plan purported to be, which was high density in the middle. And what we've done over the years is we've gotten away from that master plan, and I think this is just another step further away from where we thought we were going to be at the beginning.
If, just let me, this has changed to this, based on what this site can actually support. You could squeeze another unit in there, either through townhouses or single families. We've added two units over here. I mean, and that's, there's nothing there on this plan. So the central concept of density in that core has not been affected. You're going from six of these units, which could not be built, to five units here and three, two here and three here. So that central density, you're talking the difference of one unit? It doesn't--
On that lot, but this is on the heels of a, of a previous development that certainly took the density down from what it was, correct?
Beechwood?
Yeah.
But this issue was never raised with Beechwood.
Again, on its own merits, it's been difficult for us to look on the picture as a whole because we don't know what the whole picture is, so all we can go back to is what we thought it was going to be, the way it was pitched at the beginning, and now as these pieces are starting to come together, we realize we're getting away from that. And it's, and it's, I don't, this doesn't get us any closer, in my, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I address your comments? The Moser Way piece that we're developing now was approved by the board in March of 2012. It actually took about six or seven years of work to get to that point. When we first started speaking to Mass Development, they asked us to consider the construction of what were called mansion units at that point, and we did a lot of work around that, including some market survey work to determine whether there'd be an appetite for those. And what we found is that there was not. And that, subsequent to that, we, there was a change, and we were invited to bid on some other types of housing, which led us to, to the project we have today. I think maybe at this point, it might be helpful if I could ask Pat Goggins to come up and address the market, because part of what we're seeing is, is, is the change in, is really, we need to build something that, that people are going and willing to buy, and, and that's, you know, kind of a part of what we've, what we've done today.
Can I interject? Before you go down that road, I think maybe the discussion really has to be, because that sounds more like a special permit question about whether it makes sense to modify, so, I mean, that would be my recommendation anyway, that instead of-- So, I mean, that would be my recommendation anyway, that instead of hearing about all the benefits of going to a single-family detached with attached garages right next to it, which does eat up a lot more space and make it feel less dense, I think the, you all should decide whether that question is on the table because it wasn't advertised as a special permit, or if, you know, how you want to address that.
I, I would also add that your city solicitor said that this was not a special permission. Because we, Carolyn had brought this issue up before.
Actually, I think the city solicitor said the board would make the decision about whether it was a special permit issue, and they could vote on it, they could vote on whether or not the site plan met the special permit criteria, and it was a board decision, not a staff decision.
I, I think to me, this just feels like a special permit discussion. Everything we've talked about now isn't, isn't, site plan is, is technical and where the houses are, what type of house it is, what are the setbacks and so forth. We haven't talked about that. We're talking about high density versus single-family, the original concept versus where we are today. And now, I, I have some, a little remorse on, in the, in the previous developments that maybe those were special permit discussions that we should have had that didn't, that we didn't have. And it just seems like more and more, we're, we're turning what was the village at Hospital Hill into a housing sub-development at Hospital Hill, which was not the intent, which was not the pitch way back. So to me, that, put it together, that's a special permit discussion. I'm not, now, that's just my opinion, but I think, I think to bring this forward as a site plan review, it needs to come along either with a special permit or the special permit needs to come first to say, to see if we agree as a board whether or not this should move forward or not.
I agree.
Well, even as I listen to you describe, I mean, you know, we've all, some more than others. I mean, I haven't caught this story in its beginning, but the conceptual plan argument, I'm sure you can see from our side of it that it's frustrating to think we had a plan and all of a sudden be told that, oh, it was from such an elevation that we, we were working on it. But when you went through just comparing the two, I get a difference of 11 compared to 26 when I go three to 16, three to six, two to four.
Understand, though, that this is already permitted. And understand, too, that you already permitted Upper Ridge, which was an increase in density from this. So-
I understand. It's the, it's the elephant problem. It's, you know, we, we put a hand on it and we get a piece of an elephant, and then we come back and we get another piece of it.
And because, again, it does go back to this conceptual plan, which, this plan is really the, the purview of the CAC. And in 2012, they approved an updated master plan because they saw, you know, that this building couldn't be used, that these roadway alignments didn't make sense. So it's really, it's really part of the special permit only in this iteration.
Well, I've been on the CAC since I've been on the planning board, so it's some 11 or 12 years. When the proposal on the right came up to CAC, I actually voted against it because if anything was set in stone, it was Beth's opposition to showing anything other than all houses up there, all single-family houses. So I voted against it, even though the CAC did pass it. And at some point, the CAC is largely a toothless tiger. It probably should be abolished, but it's not the kind of committee that we want to make, to have make these decisions, I don't think.
Again, understand, though, by legislation, the CAC is the group that has the jurisdiction to make these decisions. And so, that's, this, that's what's concerning me is because the planning board is kind of reaching into the CAC's jurisdiction with this.
I just want to clarify that. The CAC has a separate jurisdiction to talk at the big elevation scale of master plan and how we're going to build out, we're going to have a mixed-use village. The planning board absolutely has jurisdiction in the approval of the special permit to comply with the zoning that talks about what a village center is. And as part of a special permit, you necessarily have to approve a site plan. So this stood as the site plan that showed compliance with special permit criteria. So, and I don't think it necessarily makes, I don't think the discussion about density has to go numbered by number, how many units were shown, because I think that is more conceptual. I think the idea of attached units that necessarily means slightly higher density and massing versus single-family detached units is probably a more appropriate conversation as opposed to saying there are three lines on this block showing, designating three units versus four units. So I just want to clarify that, too, is, is maybe something to help, to help think about more of it in a concept as density versus lower single-family detached density.
But let me just point out, though, if you, I don't believe that you can require a certain type of unit on a certain lot based on your, your permitting ability. But if you were to prefer townhomes, I think that's not as good a design solution as the, the Pequot houses here. Because they come with a garage, you would have a garage either addressing the TCB building or addressing this roadway here, Loser Street, with houses across the street. And this lot here, you know, this was kind of like an orphan lot that we didn't quite know what to do with, and, and, you know, they, they put something there to show it. But this integrates both lots into an existing neighborhood, which I think is a, a nice urban design solution. And if you're going to say, you know, townhomes here, you, you're not going to have that kind of thing. You're going to have the townhomes that don't relate to anything and cut off by a garage from its neighbors. I don't, I don't see how that's a better solution.
I, I don't know that we're necessarily saying it's got to be a townhouse with a detached garage. I think we're just saying we have very little opportunity moving forward to have density in the, in the center of the campus because there's just not that many opportunities left with the parcels that remain. And if we have single-family homes on these lots, then, then we've got almost no opportunity moving forward. And since we've gotten away from, if you look at the master plan, what the master plan was conceptually reporting to be and what is being proposed tonight, those two, those two don't follow a lineal path. And it just seems like we've gotten away from that, so this, this should be a special permit request to say, we've moved away a little, we want to go with single-family detached, it's not density in the middle, it's single-family, this is what the market demands. All those quest, all those conversations are special permit conversations.
I disagree.
I personally have no, really no objection to this site plan part of this thing, but I do think, feel that the special permit is a separate question, and we should, what's the big deal? They can apply for a special permit. And, and I would, I would probably vote for it. I'm much more concerned with what happens north of Ford Crossing. And that's a place that originally showed density along Ford Crossing.
Which we've already moved away from on the, on the southern end.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing anymore than, I mean, you can regret having Cole Morgan south of the, of Route 66, and that certainly isn't anywhere near what was originally proposed.
Correct.
That doesn't mean we should just give up.
No.
On the other hand, I mean, overall, we have increased the density. We put the assisted living here as opposed to this, which would be a part of our. We've taken the assisted living off this site and created more commercial space right on Route 66. So we've actually improved the density in this-
But every time you did that, I believe you came-
No.
-to us with a special permit request.
No, no. We have not amended the special permit. The only amendment to the special permit was for, for Cole Morgan because that was a completely new idea for the South Campus.
There wasn't a specific special permit amendment for the six lots, is that what she's, is that what her question is? Right, and there was a lot of discussion about, well, more density, it's okay because the six units, more density could go on the north side. And then that was followed on the heels of the North Employees Home, you know, coming down and re-drying the map for marketing purposes that just showed lower density on the north. So none of that was part of a special permit conversation.
I understand that there's a cap on residential development that is set by the CAC. And these plans work within that cap. There's certain commercial development that the CAC requires that's accommodated in this plan. And we, you know, our, our goal is to build out this community according to the special plan vision of density, of walkability, of the best utilization of the site that we can get. And, I mean, this site here is a good example because if you remember, we submitted it with Jonathan's Building on Lot 18, the gatehouse, and Lot 19 together at the same time because when we did the engineering studies, we found that the soils here had poor drainage. And so we submitted a drainage system which could serve both sites. And that's really what we do is we work our way through. The realities on the ground have to be taken into account when you actually want to get something built.
Understood. And I think along the way, we, you, you've made the argument that we, if we're talking about density, we call for density here and we look to the site, it's not great, but you know what, we're going to give you density over here. And Jonathan's Building, we're going to, we're going to move things around, but it all falls within the framework of the original concept, that we're moving kind of density around. But when, when we back up and we look at where we are today and what we have left to do, and the only thing I see moving forward is, is single-family lots. And to me, we're just getting away from the village, away from the density in the middle. And I'm, I'm just repeating what I said before.
Yeah, and I, I have to say, again, this is a concept. We've put this out to, for proposals as a 35-acre parcel. And we've said, you can do up to 90 units here. What's shown is 46 single-family houses. We encourage density. We want density. The Pequot development is dense. Those lots are 4,000 square feet. I mean, we had many developers who turned us down, who didn't think it could be done. And if you go over there and you walk through that, it's a nice, walkable, dense neighborhood. But we had to work hard to get this density in here. And we think this is a perfect complement to it.
And density, it is selling, though.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, and I, and that's really a tribute to Pequot, to have the courage and the foresight to understand that, that this would work.
No question.
Just seems like up until maybe a development or two ago, we had room to, we had moving pieces and said, you know, if we can't get it here, we'll get it here, and we'll swap this piece for that piece, and we'll fill in this other piece. And slowly, over time, we've run out of pieces to move around, and we, I think we need those pieces to, to further explore the density question. Or just come back for a special permit request, or we leave, so we can either reject, speaking of term, we could, if the board feels that this is a special permit question, we could reject the site plan, or we could leave it open and, and have you file for a special permit, have it kind of tag along and catch up. Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would file for a special permit because we don't believe this is a special permit decision.
So Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yep. Your name?
Kent Pequot, I'm a developer, proposed developer for these projects, for these, for these lots. And I wasn't around when a special permit was originally done. So I guess my question is, what is the board's goal in terms of the density? Why is that such an issue? Because as a developer, I have to look at the marketability side of things as well as, you know, what, what it is that I'm building. So I'm trying to understand where that's coming, where the question's coming from.
I don't, I don't think it was a goal as much as a, it was a concept that was pitched and, and approved. And because to me, this is, is just moving away from that concept that was, it's hard to approve this nebulous moving target, but that's all that we had. And so, what is being presented today is, is not specifically, it doesn't go along with that, that special permit, doesn't fall under that special permit umbrella. And just because of that, just black and white, it's, this isn't a site plan request. To me, it's a special permit request. So we just were putting the cart before the horse.
I understand that, but how does the density apply to what's before you? I, I'm confused.
Well, I might be able to answer that a little bit. The, the overall concept plan was to have a mix of housing types, a mix of affordability, and a mix of size. And the idea was, you know, you have more of a compact dense core, and from out, around that, your density gradually drops to integrate some of those lower-density units and a mix of sizes at that level, too. And so the idea is, and, and there have been, obviously Wright has been able to market and sell, you know, now he's got three, he's got apartment flats now that he's building that have six units per building. So there are different markets that are being addressed in terms of attached housing versus detached. So I think that's part of it. The other part is, is the affordability, and the more that we move away from smaller units onto larger detached lots, we're moving away from that affordability issue, which is also a big goal and written into the permit, actually, I mean, the zoning, actually, to make sure that the village is a mix of people, the way North Hampton has, over time, become mixed that way.
Let me just point out that-
See, I think easily, I think the project is easily meeting the affordability threshold or the requirements of 50%, isn't it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to point out that you're, you know, it's, we could have them put that one unit back in here, move the pathway over, and then you'd have four and four. It's, you're, the townhome does not necessarily equate to more affordable. In Upper Ridge, Jonathan has 16 townhomes approved, and some of those are going for more than $350. There's nothing that, you know, says that a certain unit type is more affordable or more dense. I mean, we, we've shown you in this little handout that you could do townhomes here, but you'd only get about four units in that way, too. And I'm, I'm just pretty clear that if, if, if density is the issue, we've maximized the density in this area by putting two more units here, which weren't contemplated, and these units here. I mean, I really don't think you should impinge on the path by putting in another lot there. I think we're, we're staying close to the original idea of density.
I guess that's my concern and my question. Density and affordability don't necessarily run hand in hand. And by definition, you, you've already achieved that up there. You have some townhouses up there, you have some townhouses already up there. All we're doing, our proposal is just responding to what the market is, and it's a continuation of the existing neighborhood that we've got up there, so. I'm, forgive me, but I'm just a little bit perplexed by the question, so. But I wasn't part of the original purpose, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from. If it's density, that's one que, that's one, that's one issue. If it's affordability, that's another issue because they don't necessarily-
I, I don't think that's either of the discussions. I think it's, does this match the original special permit?
But the discussion seems to be centered around density, and that's, that's where I'm getting-
It is, because the special permit, that's what the special permit required was density in the, at the core, and then single-family along the perimeter. We're, we're just going in circles here, talking about the same thing over and over.
Yeah, but I, and that's why I think it's important to understand that this is in the special permit as a concept plan, knowing that it would change that once the engineering on the ground was done. And so it was never literal. And we're saying that we were pretty much achieving the same density, but having done the engineering on these lots, it could, it could not support six units in any, in any form. It just, the lot is not big enough. So it's not a special permit issue. This is a concept plan. Once you do the engineering, you realize that that lot couldn't have supported six units of any kind. It's not that we're trying to decrease the density, it's that the actual conditions there can only support four units.
Can I turn it over?
I agree, we're just going in circles at this point, so we need to find a way to move forward. You know, that's not terribly constructive.
Would it be of any help, Pat Goggins, would it be of any help to provide some sense of the marketplace out there and the evolution of the project? And I, I know what you're trying to achieve in terms of the, of the, of your expectations, but the worst thing, it seems to me-
I think, Pat, hold on, I think, I think this discussion that you're about to launch into is, is a special permit discussion.
I agree.
If, if we're coming tonight for a site plan review, site plan amendment, that should be black and white, cut and dry. And nothing we've talked about tonight is black and white, cut and dry. And so, what the market conditions would bear, what, what is selling today, what is marketable today, that's, we're, we're just getting away from a site plan amendment. That's, that's, none of that is site plan discussion. Site plan discussion is, this is what the house is going to look like, this is where it's going to go, this is how tall it's going to be, this is what the setbacks are going to be. Not how much it's going to cost to build and, and what the market out there can bear. So I don't know that this would, is a discussion we need to have.
Mark, how do I find myself in a site plan discussion tied to a plan that wasn't tied down? Isn't that the sort of crux of the problem?
That's very much the crux of the problem.
That is always the problem with every single one of us.
So I, I think I'll- So I think I'll-
Can we fix that? I'm just questioning myself, can I fix that history here? You know, I don't, I mean, I think, I'm back to my elephant story. A lot of the elephant is sitting up there already. And if it, if we're sitting here saying, how come we didn't get where we wanted to go? I don't have that history to say the very, you know, Frandy's so much older than me, he's got 12 years on it.
Frandy's older than everybody.
But I do feel a little frustrated in that I think at the core of the problem, we can't go backwards.
Correct.
And so-
Well, the idea was that this, this stood as the site plan, because in a special permit process, you all have to approve a site plan. Since they weren't ready to build out all the different parts of Village Hill, this stood in its place as a site plan. And the idea was, once these pieces come together, you'll see the details of them. And so it necessarily, because of the way the zoning's set up, this has to sit as the site plan, or the special permit plan and the related site plan. And then the amendments will come in and address those details. So yes, it's not something that's typical. You see a very detailed site plan at the time a special permit is proposed normally. But given that this was a 15-year build-out and there were lots of unknowns, you know, the special permit to create the village was first approved. And the idea was to create this, to allow a special permit to create this village. And so where, what does the village look like? That this illustrious site plan says, here's what the village will look like, they'll, you know, with these different cores. And even as the discussion has moved forward about modifications and tweaking here and there, it's always sort of come back to a dense core along those two spines that, you know, originally, the road network didn't even look like that. But the idea still was maintained to have those dense core, that dense core.
I just want to follow up on what you said, Mark, about, you know, maybe we should have asked for a special, we should have required a special permit in the past. And I think that's probably right. But the fact that we haven't in the past does not mean that we shouldn't start thinking about that now. As the project moves further and further away from what I certainly envisioned this project would be.
We can't fix what the past, but we can adjust the future. I mean, not adjust it, but, but maintain, I think, what was originally intended. And to me, this is getting away from that. And I, and I think as the, you move away from that core and you're back to what conceptually was pitched, and that's less density on the perimeter, single-family homes, that all makes sense. And so moving forward, I don't, I don't, I see very little reason to have anything but a site plan discussion. But we're not there yet. We're still in this little core. We have very little core left to discuss, and to me, that's, if we can have that discussion, we should. And, and right now, if that's what was intended to be there, or as we understood it, that's what was intended to be there, and what's being presented tonight isn't that, then that should be a special permit, not a site plan.
I would just say that, well, with all due respect, these two small little pieces of property are not going to solve your density problem. We're talking plus or minus one unit. So to go through a special permit process for plus or minus one unit, with all due respect, as a developer-
Understood.
I look at these two pieces of land, and we look at them from many different perspectives. Mass development does, we do. We all want to maximize density, we all want to do the right thing in the end. I don't see how a special permit process is going to change the outcome of these two pieces.
And maybe that's the case, but, but that doesn't negate the fact that this should be a special permit request.
I understand. Once again, we can, we can go through the semantics of this, but at the end, we're talking about two very small parts of the land here.
Understood. Frandy, are you going to say something?
Well, looking at the big picture, this really is a small change. It's an incremental change. I have absolutely no objection to myself. And over the years, I mean, Hospital Hill, or whatever you, Village Hill, has been successful far beyond what I expected to have been accomplished by now. And part of it is the result of being flexible and taking into account that the fact the original, original plans, the architect or designer, whatever, thought the whole land was flat, and had all kinds of developments taking place on, on, you know, 20, 30% grades and stuff like that. So frankly, I think we ought to, I know, it sounds like a traitor to you, Starry.
No, I mean, maybe if that's, do we-
But I think we ought to just grant it. And we can, you know, then we can, I mean, we could also say that in the future, we're going to have to divine, you know, demand a special permit.
Well, if we agree tonight that this is a site plan discussion, then we can just move forward with the presentation.
The question of the density. Given that what goes one way or the other with this isn't going to really alter the density, if we want the density to be altered at this stage of the game, what do we do to make sure that the density is where we thought it should be? But if, if that's what we want, what do we do to make that happen?
By default, that's what we want. I think what we want is that for the master plan to be adhered to, and the master plan called for higher density in the core.
But if we don't care about the higher density, then we're, then we need to reposition the whole master, attempt to reposition the whole master plan.
If we don't care about the density-
But if we do, well, my question was, what, what would be your, putting this aside right now, what would be the step that would be taken if you wanted to affirm and see that that density got preceded? Because if we don't know what it is, then, then we have a different question to talk about.
Well, I think all along, we didn't know what was coming around the corner for this whole development, and that's what made it hard to-
I guess that.
You know?
But I think, I think the other thing is sort of that slow erosion. So the original master plan that was in the, that was approved is on the left, and on the right, for marketing purposes, what have you, a lot of that density is gone, so-
I hear that.
So, you know, at some point, you know, the illustration of what was originally approved as a site plan is not matching up with that exactly a site plan. So you need to make that determination about whether or not that's a big enough shift to adjust.
But the question is, what do you do?
But that's what I'm saying. That, I think that's, that was my recommendation, is then you need to have that conversation about, in the context of a special permit amendment. You know, it's advertised, the whole conversation is, well, you know, maybe, maybe this density here isn't, isn't the right way to go, because for marketing purposes, it's just not working, and, and, you know, we want to go ahead, hurry up and get this finished and built out, and at this moment in time, the market's not supporting what the master plan, or what the site plan associated with the original special permit looks like, so.
Can I offer a comment here? Is the adaptation of special permitting for a change of use going forward really a legal issue? And shouldn't that be asked of the solicitor by the board going forward? And maybe that answers the question that was posed over here. What's the protocol going forward?
I think it's pretty clear, the planning board has the jurisdiction to determine whether or not this is, constitutes compliance with the special permit and whether or not an amendment is required, so.
I want to just point out again, the special permit calls this a concept master plan and acknowledges that it will be amended from time to time by the CAC. It acknowledges that. And as Ken pointed out, we're talking the difference of maybe one or two units. That doesn't seem to be, to rise to the level of special permit amendment. Given that the special permit called this a concept plan and understood that things would shift.
Are you trying to say something, David?
I don't have a clear grasp of the density that you were talking about before I got here. But it seems like to me, rather than a core center, what we have there now is a spine. You've got the commercial business down on, on the main road, you've got the nursing home, you've got some dense development, but it's not the way you originally envisioned it in a sort of donut village shape. But I think that's gone. I mean, it looks like to me that, I don't, I don't know where you would fix that now.
What would you do?
So that's the, you know, I, I, I know we've all got such history with this, and I'm trying to back up and say, but these houses, I'm probably in alignment with Frandy, that these are, that this, this is not the fix, except for maybe the process. I mean, I think that's where our conversation ought to be, is what's to be gained in exercising the special permit option now for this piece, these five units? As opposed to, let's really get our head about what we really want to happen in the future and see, in, in independent discussion of what, what are the options that we could do tactically with what's left available?
And I think I agree with everything you just said, but that's, again, a special permit discussion. So I think procedurally, that, which is all I want to talk about, right at the very beginning, the question was, why is this a site plan review amendment and not a special permit amendment? It's just a procedural question, because it's a bigger picture question. And if we get into special permit, and the answer is, the market won't allow it, this is what we need to build, it's, we're talking about one unit, doesn't make, in the big picture, doesn't make sense. That might all be perfectly true, but that's a, that's a different, that's not a site plan discussion. And so, and may, and maybe take a straw poll, and if this, if, if we're all fine with this as being a site plan discussion, and we move forward tonight, then I'm okay with that. I'm just saying, I think procedurally, this should be a special permit.
You refer to it as a site plan amendment, it's just really a site plan.
Site plan, correct, sorry.
Can I ask, I mean, coming into this new, so, I'm a little ignorant about the history and, and maybe even the definition of, if there's an absolute to what we're defining as dense, because it seems like we're talking about a relative question, how dense is it? But it still is dense. And so is there a line that we've crossed, or that is being crossed, that is making this not dense?
No. And that's, that's been the problem all along, because there was, it was, it was a concept, it was a moving target, it was a blank slate, and over time, it's been filled in. And now, over time, we've had the ability to kind of step back and compare that to the original concept. And it seems like we're just trending a little bit away from that original concept. And this might be an opportunity just to stop and say, is this the discussion we're supposed to be having? If it is, that's fine. If not, if it should be a special permit, big picture question, to make sure we're all on the same page and this is okay, that we're moving a little away from the original template, everyone's good with that, then that's fine. But that's not a, site plan discussion is very technical, just, there's not a lot of discussion with that.
Generally, you want to go first, right? I was going to say, generally, the site plan only looks at, is this a suitable, is a suitable use for this location? That's, that's what a site, I mean, that's what a special-
Special permit, I was going to say, right.
I'm sorry, I get it. They both have S.P. in the plan. So a special permit is, is this a suitable use for the, for the land? And they certainly meet that, and I think it's reasonably close to the original concept. And a concept, the original concept that's 10 or 20 years old certainly is going to need modification. I'm just, you know, we got to be flexible, you got to be pragmatic about it.
I think we've been flexible and pragmatic every time something has come in front of us, and we have moved further-
You're going to put an end to that, right?
And we, we've moved, I've always said this, I've been very vocal about it, we have moved further and further and further away from what the original concept was. This is not anything about, like, what I've envisioned. There's no workforce housing that we talked about. There is no village in Village Hill. There's no, there's almost no commercial development. There's a one building with Fazi in it, that's it. And Colm Morgan, which, you know, is another thing entirely. And, you know, I think, I think we've gotten so accustomed to bending and flex, and being flexible in ways that I have always found distasteful. And this is just, you know, this is just another one of those, and I, you know, it's an opportunity to stop, to stop doing that.
But you are, the point is that we have done that in pieces, but we have done it with site plan. All the, I mean, all of a sudden, we're saying, no, now we're going to do something different. And I'm thinking, if we really were going to get the benefit out of making that sort of change, I think we had to have done it, drawn the conceptual plan out for what it wasn't early on. But I see most of the villages built now.
But is that a reason to throw up our hands and just give up on the whole thing?
No. But I think this may not be the proper, this may not be the one to take, to do it on. I don't see this, the opportunities to do these two lots, you know, these two parcels much differently is, I don't see it.
So that being said, you think that discussion tonight isn't a special permit discussion, it's a site plan review as presented?
So the idea is, when you look at a site plan, that it's, the site plan also has to be consistent and compliant with this overall special permit that was approved. So I think that's what you're saying, yeah.
I think we all know what we're saying. The special permit that we approved has been a moving target. And so you can't turn around now and say, if it didn't match the special permit, then we can't just do site plan, because we've been doing site plan against that special permit all along.
I think at each stage, you approve the site plan based on your belief that it's still consistent with the, with the site plan. And so there may be a point at which it's moved far enough away.
I think we approved it with our fingers crossed that, that low-income housing would show up, and that, that worker housing that Jen was talking about would show up.
Even, even the bungalows, at one point, the discussion was, would those, would that be workforce living, or would that be affordable housing? And the argument was, well, the square footage is going to be so small that by default, it would be affordable housing. But as we've seen, that's not the case at all. They're selling well, but they're selling expensive. There's not, it's certainly not workforce living. And so that was, it seemed like another opportunity lost, big-picture wise, moving away from where we thought we were headed. And by its, you know, in a bubble, it's, it's come out great, and, and the houses look lovely, and it's very walkable and manageable, and everything's great. But I, it just seems like now we have an opportunity where maybe we should have done that before, to step back and just compare what's being requested versus what, where we started. And if the two match, move forward. If they don't, it's a special permit request.
Let me point out, too, that the affordability goals are the province of the CAC. They are not part of the special permit. And the work, the, what the CAC called market rate affordable, these are the market rate affordable, and $350 was the price that the CAC agreed to. So that is carrying out that affordability goal. We have, these, these two TCD buildings are 33 units, and of those, 26 are affordable. So it's an 80% affordability in these two units. And these are affordable to people making 60% of the median income.
Okay, let's, I think we're, we're-
But I just-
I understand what you're saying, but-
Yeah.
But we're just getting way off on what we're talking about.
I don't think we're getting that far off, because everybody's talking about the affordability. Affordability overall up there is five times what's required in the city. I mean, and, or affordability advocates keep wanting to make it more, and I don't think that we need to do that. And I don't even think it needs to be part of the discussion, as long as we're meeting the CAC's goals.
I think the discussion should be, we should come back to its core, and procedurally, should we move forward with a site plan review? Or keep the hearing open and ask for a special permit to be submitted, or reject the site plan and start over with a special permit request?
No, we should just-
Yeah. So, so as, so as not to have the discussion, I want to do, raise your hands if you think this is a site plan issue, and we can move forward and hear the presentation and move forward with that, under that umbrella, site plan review, then raise your hand. That doesn't help much. Three up, three down.
Well, I will try asking the other question first, because-
If you think this is a special permit, this should be a special permit amendment, because what is being requested moves away from the conceptual special permit plan that was initially pitched and approved, then raise your hand.
It's predictable.
I think my frustration is, I'm not sure this is the, I do think we need to decide how to move forward, but I'm not sure that this particular piece of work is what we ought to draw the line in the sand over.
I agree.
I agree.
But then, the next time, we're going to be in the same position?
No, 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 we have to do it before the next time. We have to do it before the next time. We don't wait for the next time, otherwise, you're absolutely right.
We'll get the same pitch that we always get.
Well, yeah, I get that. But if we, at least we should have the discussion and, and work it through without these five pieces of, these five houses being the-
There is no other context, though. You can't, the, the city can't initiate a special permit amendment. It has to be the applicant in the context of a project. So, this would be the venue that you would make the determination whether or not the plan in front of you is consistent with the approved special permit. And if it is, then move forward with the site plan review. If not, then pull back, have the bigger conversation about special permit. Maybe it does, maybe it makes sense with all the rationale about special permit. It's just, that's not the question that's before you, it's not a special permit question, it's a site plan. So, this is the venue in which it would take place.
And I would submit that this is not a special permit, because this and this are not that different than this and this, and certainly are covered in the idea of a concept versus an actual plan.
It's the same use.
I'm not changing my mind. So, I mean, I don't know how to move this forward. We just, we keep circling around.
We can, we can listen to the presentation, and then take a vote on the presentation, and-
Can I ask Carolyn a question? Go back to what you just spoke about. Is it not possible for us to move this property, to, to do what we have previously done, which is approve a site plan? That's what we've done in the past for each piece of this property. But then, before the next one comes up, go back and review the differences between this conceptual plan and the actual that we have arrived at a decade later, and see if, if we have, if we're so far off that we can't get any, if we want density, define what that is. And if we, you know, if we want, for what's left in the property, to transmit a message to mass development and the developers that are coming, that, yes, here's what's going to happen next time. It's going to be a special permit. Okay? That's the piece that I don't get. And I think we're in the same boat, thinking, let's-
It just seems like there's very little core of the village left for the next time.
That's true, but these five pieces aren't going to make any difference.
My elephant is going to look different.
And, and that might be 100% accurate, but that's, again, it's, it's just, to me, it's just a black and white procedural issue. This isn't, this isn't a site plan discussion, special permit. So, so for me, I, I'm, I don't, I don't feel hearing the presentation on, on development for these parcels, I don't think that will change my procedural, you know, my, my, my thought on the procedural question. Because even if I love it, and I think it's great, I still think this is a special permit question. So, I would be in favor of, if we're going to go through the presentation, have a hearing, have three up, three down, and not get anywhere, to keep the, keep this open, and if the applicant wants to file a special permit, let it catch up.
We will not.
I think we'd prefer to have a rejection from the board, because we believe we have a legal precedent here, based on the past history of the board.
So, move forward then with the presentation?
Once we move, well, what about the concept that you can't really reject the site plan, you can only condition it?
You can reject a site plan if it doesn't meet the special permit right here. I mean, if it doesn't meet the approved special permit for the, if it doesn't meet the plan for Village Hill, you can reject it. And so, that's the question, that was originally the question, if you all don't feel that that's, you know, that, I mean, if you feel that it does meet it, you can approve the site plan.
Well, I see the writing on the wall here. They're not going to do the special permit, because they don't want to be in a position anytime in the future to have to do that.
Yeah, I don't think this is the time to draw the line in the sand.
Don't you think it's interesting how much they're pushing back? Don't you think there's a reason? I mean, I think that this is an important-
Yeah, it's because we're being a pain in the butt.
This, well, we've given mass development every single thing on a silver platter.
I'm not mass development's biggest fan, but I think in this case, it's clearly a reasonable thing to-
Darn.
Pardon?
Darn.
You know, in spite of all of that conversation, this project has been an incredible success, and that is due to your flexibility as a planning board and mass development's commitment. As a developer coming in at the tail end of this, or at this phase of it, you know, I'm thrilled to be a part of it. It has been a success due to the flexibility that you've offered. Once again, I, I get, at some point, you've got to draw the line in the sand. I just question whether this is the place to do it, because at the, the, in the end, I don't see any radical change here. You're not going to fix the problems that existed, if there are in fact, problems in the past on these two small little parcels of land.
Yeah. And our point is that what we're proposing is consistent with this.
Exactly.
That would have to be the argument, that it is consistent, and it's not trying to fix, I mean, any kind of requirement for a special permit amendment isn't saying, wait a second, we're going to fix that. So, you know, if someone was going to try to file a legal claim against the planning board, it isn't going to be based on the fact that you're trying to fix something, some bad things that were done, or some things that you didn't feel comfortable with in the past. It's about whether or not you felt like it was consistent with the map, with the approved special permit. So, that, those are the questions that you would be making a determination of.
And so, conceptually, there were six in the early plan, and now there are five.
I wouldn't say you base it on numbers. I think it's the, the massing, the type of housing, the presentation on the street is, you know, this was sort of the line of higher-density housing, and then across the alley is when you start the detached accessory units for, you know, to put it as simply as possible. So, I don't think, again, it's about counting up the number of units. If they, for an attached four-unit townhouse is, is, you know, more condensed and uses less land, obviously, and fits on the parcel, and it backs up to four single-family detached units. So, you know, just because it doesn't match the six units on the property, isn't what I would suggest makes it, makes or breaks it. I think it's really the type of housing and the way-
Well, I'm thinking of the connected housing right down the street. I mean, how many, what's the density of that, of those buildings? So, so the separate townhouses with garages doesn't get us anywhere. But-
But there is the, at the end of, can you tell me, Beth, what the, what I'm thinking about as I turn the corner at-
There are four units in each of these buildings.
And lot-wise, how does that amount of ground under those units compare to the lot sizes you're looking at?
You can see this, you know.
I think it's a tough argument, when it's a continuation of an existing neighborhood with an existing product, to turn against that. It's not like this is totally different.
No, but I'm talking about the, the buildings adjacent to it, to the east. I mean, it's-
No, no, I understand, but it, but it's in keeping with what's present-
This is apartments, too. You don't have to provide garages when you build apartments. The market demands that you provide garages when you build townhomes.
So, we're three up and three down. Do we want to hear the presentation on, on the build-out, and then, and then take a vote? If the applicant prefers that we do that, why don't we hear that?
I'll do that if I can get Devin to change your mind.
Well, maybe after the presentation, we will. So, why don't we move forward then with the presentation? Thank you.
For the site plan part of the discussion, I'd like to introduce Eric Bernard, who will walk us through the specifics of the lots.
Should I put it down low, up front?
Up high.
Maybe, you know, to the side of the easel, I guess, just so the, not in front of the camera, and we can see it.
No public here, Rick.
Well, but they're filming it.
They're filming it, so. I'm Eric Bernard with Boston O'Neil, and we're presenting lots A-22 and A-27, the extension to existing Village Hill subdivision on Moser Street. And so, what we're proposed here this evening is to take lot A-22, subdivide it, there's a separate A&R filing that goes with the site plan, subdivide A-22 into two lots, and divide A-27 into three lots to support the traditional neighborhood development. Not quite a bungalow, but a small urban setting home. For those of you who have any questions in front of you, I just looked at the proposed Consistent with the product type from Village Hill, there are five units being shown with garages. Lot A-27 with the three lots, as mentioned in the previous discussion, we kept the walking path connectivity there in place. And we're now showing the three units with garages, with accesses coming off the alleyway to the back, and the houses themselves front on Musanti Drive. They all have porches, consistent with the former product, or the past product that's been proposed. And on the corner of Moser and Musanti, the one corner lot is a little bit different, because the width and the side street setback don't allow the garage to front on Moser, it doesn't fit within this, within the distance required for garage setback off the street. The garage is actually sort of behind the unit, and runs onto Musanti. The grading in this area is fairly flat on Moser and Musanti, so there's probably not a lot of topographic difference between the two roads. But overcoming down off of Ford Crossing, the first unit is pulled back a little bit, because it's about a three-foot height differential between Ford Crossing and that first unit, as you come down the hill from the grade. The utilities are stubbed out on Moser Street and Musanti, because there is only one stub on the lot A-27. We're showing, bringing the utilities to each individual lot, consistent with DPW's request. We did get a letter from Carolyn Forward-Late with some comments from DPW, which have some minor adjustments that we have no, that we're in agreement with, or have no comments on. We're showing a continuation of some street trees, which are really creating the alleyway, and providing a little bit of screening. We're providing some screening and some sort of formation plantings for the walkway. And then, there is some rear yard screening at the back of these two lots, as they head closer to the more commercial area of the site. That's a basic run-through on the, on the units.
If the garages were placed in the back in the alleyway, instead of side by side, wouldn't that, couldn't you increase density that way?
Okay. So, if we took the garage, and put the garage in the back of the house, we're required to have two parking spaces per unit. And so, the garages and the byline of villages, that the garages need to be 20 feet off of the street line or the property line.
There's no parking requirement, actually, in plan?
Two per unit?
A maximum of two.
Then it's the design guideline for mass development that asks for two per unit. But we do have the differential that you can't get the garage too close to the roadway.
But so, now that you know, there's no requirement, they could be moved to the back to increase density? They could, it could be reworked?
No, because the design guidelines by mass developments, which are part of the restrictions on the lots, require us to put the garages 20 feet back from the roadway or the access way, so.
The design guidelines are part of the special plan.
Right.
From the, but this is the alley, though. There's not, there's a setback from a private alley in your design guideline?
It's from-
It's a design guideline.
The property line or the street line. So, we considered that back property line. The back property line here is not, if you wanted to do that, you would have to make the property the center line of the street, which is sometimes popular to do when you do an alleyway, traditional neighborhood development. In this particular case, the property line is in fact, the rear yard line. So, it doesn't leave us a lot of flexibility with that setback.
So, the edge of the alley is the rear lot line, and so, you're saying if you've moved the, if you slid the house forward, and had more room in the rear for a garage coming right off the alley, you're saying there's a setback issue in the alley?
There is also a setback from the backside of the sidewalk or the property line, again, in the design guidelines for mass development. So, that the houses are placed, well, they're not all placed, but because of their, it's a tropical shape, but the one in the corner is placed as close to the front property line as possible.
You still need 20 feet in front of a garage, so.
Right. But I'm talking about, instead of sliding them back, this unit over here is, could be slid forward. I'm not sure if you could get 20 feet, but I know in these two units, you couldn't get 20 feet, because of the overall length of the, of the lots, or the depth, long, long axis.
These three identical houses?
The lots, the layouts and the, and I'll, I should have you address the actual, but the footprint of the lots, the maximum build-out and sizes are the same, but the actual housing units.
The actual houses are, everything that we're currently offering up in Village Hill would be offered here as well. So, these are just building envelopes that are conceptual. The market determines what goes there.
The outside, you're just, what you're showing us is the equivalent of the basement, if there were a basement, in terms of the footprint?
Yes, the maximum footprint that would go on the site, yeah.
What are these being marketed at?
They start, well, currently, everything up at Village Hill starts at, that we're doing, starts on low 300s.
And has anything sold for the low 300s?
No, the, the market is not responding to that, and that is somewhat frustrating, because we're offering that product, to your point, we're offering that product, and the market is not there.
Are you saying that they ought to be cheaper, or they ought to be more expensive?
I'm saying that we're building to what the market is, is asking for. We're offering product in the low 300s. And the, what's, it's a very good question. What's happening here is people are coming in and are buying a smaller home, and they're pointing it much nicer. So, that's kind of, kind of where we see the trend, is developers going anyway. People aren't interested in the big McMansions anymore. But that doesn't mean they don't want a sma, a very nice home. They're much happier, or they're happier, just as happy to take a smaller home and make the interior of it much nicer. So, we've seen that in repetition up here. Notwithstanding the fact that we're into the lots now, that we believe are going to be more price-driven. The lots on the rim were a little bit different. The, you know, those sites were a little bit different. That's why I say the density and affordability don't- believe are going to be more price-driven. The lots on the rim were a little bit different. The, you know, those sites were a little bit different. That's why I say the density and affordability don't go hand-in-hand, necessarily go hand-in-hand. It is a market-driven thing. As developers, we're not trying to build the most expensive home. We're responding to the market.
So, I just want to clarify, there are no setback requirements in the PV because that was changed sort of midstream, so, from rear, side, or front, so, if, that kind of is a question.
Okay. Did you have a question, Ian, or no?
Uh, there's no public here, I guess, or is there any public that wants to ask a question? No. Okay. So, discussion? I mean, I, I think the units as described are, are fine, or are nice, but it didn't change my opinion of the kind of, almost like a massing. That initial, when Beth had the original conceptual drawing, was, was really kind of a massing diagram of this is where we think, things should be, and if you kind of blur your eyes and step back, the massing in the center was heavy, dense, and then you get single-family units running through. And to me, single-family units that close to the core is a departure from that original plan. So, that's a different discussion for me than the one we're having tonight. It's a discussion of, should that be the case or should it not? And if it is, then that, then, if it is, then I think this would be fine. But I think before we can get to this point, it's a special permit discussion. I think this is an opportunity to check ourselves, to compare where we are, where we thought we were headed, to where we are going, and that's all, those are all special permit discussions.
And do you feel like there's enough of the project left to make much of a difference?
I don't know that there is, but I don't think that should change us. That should matter. I, I think, to be honest, we got, you could almost see coming where, because we never saw the whole, we saw moving parts where we thought we wanted it to go, and now we've stepped back and we realize it hasn't really gone that way. And so, do we just stop and say, "Well, we made a good effort, but we didn't do it"? Or should we try to hold on to the last couple of moving pieces that we have in that core and say, "Let's have that discussion. Let's have that special permit discussion"? And if, if the answer from that discussion is, "There's not a lot we're going to change here, so let it go", then that's fine. But we haven't had that discussion, and to me, that's, that's the discussion we should be having for these parcels.
If we had, we, it seems like we did have, I know we didn't have it in the context of a submittal, but we've had that discussion, and we're sort of in a, in a deadlock. So, what is the procedure for sort of moving through this? Is we just continue until...
Somebody gives.
Somebody gives, or do we table it until we get another person in, or is there a...
If we vote now, it's, if the vote stays the way it was, it's 3-3, and so it doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass, okay.
But the discussion, I, I don't agree entirely that that's the discussion we've had. The discussion I'm trying to have is just a procedural question, discussion. That's it. And if we move past that and discuss, are these the right homes? Do these look good? Is this developed? And that's, to me, is entirely a different discussion, and whether these work or not, within the context of their neighboring houses and so forth, that's, it's, that's a different discussion. That's not the one I'm trying to have. The one I'm trying to have is, right out of the gate, the very first question that Beth asked, answered was, "Why is this a site plan review and not a special permit?" That's the only discussion I, I wanted to have.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, second, Deb? All in favor? Okay. So, we've talked this through 15 times, back and forward, and back again. Did, was, did the presentation change anyone's mind?
Now that we've closed public hearing, can we, we cannot leave, we'll leave it open, right? I mean, that's, we just took the step that would not have allowed us to just stop.
No, no, you can continue, you can, you don't have to make a decision tonight, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking, if we had to leave public hearing open to do that.
No, no, public hearings close, but you can certainly, you know, wait until your next meeting if you want to take a vote. It doesn't happen all the time, but you're, you certainly have the ability to do that. You don't have to give you a decision right away.
Why would you want to?
Guidelines, but we can't discuss it outside of the public.
Right.
Why would you, were you interested in waiting, or are you just asking?
I'm interested in the, the 3-3 split and where that puts us.
Oh, I mean, I, my feeling is, I think we just have to vote, right? I mean, I don't think there's any other, anything else we can do.
I admire the profile's encouraged approach to this thing, but I just don't think this is the place for it. I think it's a perfectly reasonable proposal, which essentially, it is the same use as is proposed under the special permit conditions, and it's, it's all, it's a little bit short of the rubber stamp process, but I drive through there every week or two because I live out that way. And it's not going to change how proud I feel about my involvement in the...
I agree. I think it's a beautiful development. I think I tell people about it. I ask them to, to drive through it. I, I think it's great. But I just think it would be an opportunity lost if, I think by itself, again, it's fine, and by these parcels itself, it probably meets the special permit. But taken as a whole, which is a special permit kind of discussion, taken as a whole, we're moving away, and we have an opportunity to, if not get back, at least kind of self-correct, or take a, take a moment and, and compare to where we thought we were going to where we are.
Can I ask, if we were to go through and go through the special permit process, and we came to this, to the conclusion that, yes, it needs to be more dense, what would that mean? Would it mean one more unit in there?
Again, I think it's just a mass, to me, it's a question, which is different than the procedural question, that more density, to me, is a massing. Single-family detached is not, is, is not townhouse, is not apartment complex, is not, it's just a massing, it's just the feel that you get when, the feel, that's all that we could approve way back when, was kind of a conceptual feel, was that density in the middle and, and single-family in the perimeter. And the feel is lost if you have more single-family closer to the core.
I think that 4,000-square-foot lots is pretty damn dense.
Yeah, it's like row houses or, or...
I don't see it going away from...
The single-family houses are not as dense, like Mark just said, as townhouses or apartments. It's just, I mean, it's the least...
They're a lot more dense than one-acre lots.
The least dense, but it's the least dense structure.
Right, but one-acre lots was never, conceptually, the, the goal for the master plan was one-acre lots in the middle.
Well, but it used to be sort of the goal for the city, that we got all this sprawl. Anyway, I am, I mean, I am a little bit disturbed that it shows all the private houses north of Ford Crossing, and I would like to see that somehow addressed. But, you know, we live in a real world, and I don't think we necessarily have to base all our decisions on what some idealists thought up many, many years ago. We have, it's a real, I think we have to be pragmatic, and I think that this is a perfectly deserving project. We should just approve it.
If we were to not approve it, and we were to go back and have a discussion, do you believe that there's any reason to think that we're in a position to create an environment where greater density would occur on what is left?
That's a good question. I think if, if, and that, and that comes back to the, like Devin said, you know, touching a piece of the elephant every time and not having the ability to see the, the whole picture. We've never had that ability, and so...
Is there a way to get that ability?
I don't think there is a way to get that, but I think, I think, conceptually, it would be less likely to have density to the north, where the north building was and headed out in that direction, than it would at its core. And if, conceptually, we're supposed to have density at its core, and then, and then it, it lessens as you get to the perimeter, then our, then our density focus should be where, in the core, with what we have left in the core, which is very little, but...
This is it. This is the only thing that's left in the core.
So, put your badge of courage on.
What?
So, put your badge of courage on.
I don't understand. Sorry, I missed it.
It's the last...
I mean, this is our last, this, you know, this is our last hurrah. If you don't think that this matches what the original plan had, had in store for this, then now's the time.
No, I think it matches fine.
Okay. Then make a motion.
So, we ready to vote?
Can I ask, from, is it, is there, is abstention a possibility on a vote, or no?
It's possible, but it counts as a no.
Okay.
You lose the badge of courage, that's...
Yeah, that's the wish vote.
Yes, you have.
My conundrum here is, I don't know that I, I can get what I want. I mean, I think we all know what we want. We'd love to have a dense apartment complex sort of split between these two lots and call it, you know, the density in the core that we wanted. But I can't make that happen. I mean, I can only say yes or no once it's proposed to me.
I agree. I agree with all of that, and to me, we can't have that discussion tonight because the discussion tonight was site plan, not special permit. And if it came forward as a special permit, we'd have that discussion, and whichever way it went, I'd be good with that. But that's not, the applicant was, it was presented as a site plan, and everything you just said, which I agree with 100%, is not a site plan discussion.
But also, we don't, I mean, like you said, we don't know whether we can get more density here or not, has not been presented to us. And, you know, people, developers have different goals than we do. That's perfectly fine and appropriate, but we are not, we are not charged with, you know, trying to meet the market demand. That's not what, what Hospital Hill was ever about. So...
Oh, I think that was in the back of everybody's mind.
Not mine. This is a really special piece of property. I mean, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing for us. This is not a subdivision out on Route 66.
I mean, I, I think it's a great discussion to have, and we should have it, and we should come, add it from every angle, but that's not the discussion for tonight. So, somebody want to, there's, offer up another opinion or put this thing to vote? Randy, you gonna put on your badge of courage?
My white hat here.
I didn't think you had a white.
May I move that we approved the site plan proposed by the Peacock Group, five single-family house lots on Musanti Drive, North Hampton map IDs 38A-135 and 31C-35.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Anne? All in favor? Three to three.
Three to three, different three to three?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a really interesting, I mean, the...
That was a good one to start with.
It is the question. It's a procedural.
That's all it is, to me. It's just purely procedural.
Yeah, this was a little too much like the betting board.
Yeah, yeah.
That doesn't bode well for me.
Yeah, I know. They were quick until you showed up there. They were like 15, 20 minutes.
That's true. Do we have anything else? Well, it depends if you want to move on to that stuff, you want to leave that for January.
Want to take a holiday break and...
How about till the end of the year? No. No, you have to be in it for that URA discussion.
Wait a minute, we do have a meeting on the 26th.
Valuable.
Yeah, you can come.
Uh, let me just double-check, sorry.
Specifically up there?
Um, actually, we have zoning board. I don't recall a planning board. It's a good day to tackle all this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, all the loose stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the...
When are the January meetings?
The ninth, you said.
No, I'm here. No, I mean, to me, you know, at the end of the month, thank you for asking. But I don't think I'm going to miss a meeting.
Brandon, did you say Stevens at the brewery?
Pardon?
Did you say Stevens at the brewery?
It's a legal opinion to tell us whether she was right.
And that's what's going to happen.
So, are we, is there anything?
Hi.